City Council to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on a ground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Here.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Here.
McEwen?
Here.
Graff?
Here.
Thank you and welcome you all for coming this evening. Everybody's seen the agenda for the evening, any changes to make to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda has been approved. In your packets, you also should have received the minutes from last city council meeting. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last city council meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes from the last council meeting has been approved. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'd like to recognize Miranda Dahlak who is joining us today. She's the new executive director of the Moberly Area Chamber of Commerce. And I believe she was going to approach with Michelle with the chamber.
Just want to say just introduce Miranda and have her meet you guys tonight. So yeah, just want to introduce Miranda tonight, it's her first council meeting, so she's gonna enjoy listening and learning, so see what it's all about. Hi, I'm Miranda Dahlak, I'm the new executive director for the chamber and this is week two, week two I guess, still learning and seeing what's going on, so please be patient as I'm figuring out how everything works and just here to observe.
Well, welcome, we're looking for a lot of really big things out of you, got some big shoes to fill, you know.
Let's see what we're gonna do.
We have full faith in you, so yeah, thank you very much for introducing yourself and if you need anything, we're full support.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, some of you may or may not know, William Bill Schaefer, who served the city of Moberly on the council from 2006 through 2009, and then again from 2012 to 2015, passed away this weekend, so we thought it'd be a good idea to take a moment of silence to recognize Mr. Schaefer at this time. Thank you. Okay, under the subheading of public hearing and receipt of bids. Number two, receipt of bids for 2024 overlay and milling and street improvements.
You can see the three bidders up there, we received, the Christiansen was the lowest on paving, and we also feel like it's the best way to go is to have the same contractor with a reason to do the milling as well for coordination purposes, and you can see where the city retains the millings, they were the cheapest price anyhow, so that's what we're suggesting, recommending.
The recommendation is Christiansen, correct?
Christiansen for $104.75 for the overlay and $3.50 on the city retaining the millings.
Very good. Any questions on this set of bids? We have a motion to approve Christiansen construction for this project.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The bid has been approved. Number three, receipt of bids for airport renovations.
So we have, well, we're skipping that, okay, sorry, there's three things on there, there were two we're asking to move forward, are the GM, I'm sorry, that is all. GM Fire Protection, plank electrical was a 16.9 and there should be one for HVAC on there. So the Ozark sprinkler, we had three different things, Ozark sprinkler was the one we selected for the fire suppression, but that one's being moved on to another one at a later meeting. The ones we're looking for now at this time are electrical and HVAC, and so plank electrical is a low bidder for 16.9, 10.36, and then should be Smith Refrigeration is what we were asking to move forward on the HVAC. Do you have Smith Refrigeration? Okay, it was 28,000 and some change for Smith Refrigeration for the HVAC, which was, we didn't receive any bids at the initial opening, so nobody submitted, we put it out there for advertisement and so staff was able to track down local areas and we did get a bid from Smith Refrigeration, that was the 28,000, that was within the price range we anticipated. Sorry, I don't have, I don't know why.
So the recommendation from staff is to approve the plank?
Plank electrical.
Electrical.
Yes.
And Smith's Refrigeration, correct?
It is in your packet, the Smith's Refrigeration bid, I apologize, it's not on that sheet, that was on a bid opening sheet, so it's on there in your packet and it's for, pardon, 28,614. So those are the two items that we're having on here that we are recommending on the regular agenda, you'll see down here further.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders on any of these bids? We have a motion to approve the two recommended bids.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The bids have been approved. I'm gonna skip back up real quick, I failed to mention that if anybody wants to speak to the council, please come up and grab a green card, please fill out your name and address and all of the information, and we will ask you to come forward a little bit later on in the meeting. Thank you very much. Also, tonight we have a consent agenda, as do we most nights. Is there anything in the consent agenda that any of the council members would like to have pulled out for specific discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the reading of the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor of reading the consent agenda by title only one time, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please read the consent agenda.
Bill number R 1643, a resolution of the city of Moberly, Missouri amending the city of Moberly, Missouri Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Bill number R 1644, a resolution accepting bids and authorizing contracting for the 2024 milling and overlay street project. Bill number R 1645, a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the Morley Pump Station retrofit and force main extension contract with Emery Sappensons. Bill number R 1646, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a 10-inch ball check valve for the Seven Bridges Road lift station. And bill number R 1647, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a wet well grinder for the McKenzie lift station.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion regarding tonight's consent agenda? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Under the next subheading ordinances and resolutions, number nine, an ordinance, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 613 Adams Avenue within the city of Moberly which required nuisance abatement, asked to be read twice for consideration by title only.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, is there a second? All those in favor for the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 613 Adams Avenue within the city of Moberly which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of Chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to Section 26-2 and Section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Phew, any further discussion? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 613 Adams Avenue within the city of Moberly which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of Chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to Section 26-2 and Section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Thank you, is there any further discussion regarding the ordinance? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Number 10, a resolution, Ms. Graff.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an owner-architects agreement with WSKF, Inc. for Phase 2 of the fire station, and I ask that it be read once for consideration and passage.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second, all those in favor for the reading of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an owner-architects agreement with WSKF, Inc. for Phase 2 of the fire station.
Any further discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing none, is there a motion to read, or I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has passed. Number 11, a resolution, Mr. Kimmons.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Plank Electric LLC for the electrical installation as part of the Omar N. Bradley Airport Terminal Remodeling Project, and I ask it be read once for consideration of passage.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor for the reading of the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, first and only reading, please.
A resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Plank Electric LLC for the electrical installation as part of the Omar N. Bradley Airport Terminal Remodeling Project.
Thank you, any further discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has passed. Number 12, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Charles Van Boin of Smith Refrigeration Company for the HVAC installation as part of the Omar N. Bradley Airport Terminal Remodeling Project, and I ask that be read once for consideration of passage.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor for the reading of the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please read the resolution one time.
A resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Charles Van Boin doing business at Smith Refrigeration Company for the HVAC installation as part of the Omar N. Bradley Airport Terminal Remodeling Project.
Thank you. We have a motion to, or is there any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor to approve the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has passed. Number 13, a resolution, Mr. Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between May 17th and May 30th, asked to be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please read the resolution one time.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between May 17th, 2024 and May 30th, 2024, in the amount of $873,259.64.
Any further discussion? Not hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor of approving the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has passed. I guess I skipped my script, I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution, Matthew P. Douglas, City Treasurer, City of Moberly. Okay, under the subheading, anything else to come before the council? Consideration for Approval of Renewal Liquor Licenses.
Mayor and council, we've received renewal liquor applications from Aldi Incorporated, Number 82, El Vicaro, Pizza Works, Seventh Heaven Convenience Enterprises at 1100 North Morley Street, and Seventh Heaven Moberly Store at 300 West Rollins. These have all gone through the necessary departments and we recommend approval of the renewal licenses.
Thank you, any further discussion regarding the renewal of the liquor licenses? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor licenses?
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? They can stay in business, they got their liquor licenses. Number 15, public comments, does anyone care to address the council this evening? Everybody's being awfully quiet out there tonight. All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. We'll adjourn to a work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of real estate and personnel matters.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Probably not record time, but we did okay. We'll move right into work session. Give me a second to get organized here. Okay, request ordinances and miscellaneous. Number one, a resolution approving grant funding to area civic and charitable organizations and authorizing the city manager to execute annual service agreements with area civic and charitable organizations. Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have four civic organizations that are part of this every single year, Moberly Area Council on the Arts, Senior Multipurpose Center, Moberly Community Foundation, and Moberly Community Betterment. Those services agreements are in the packet there, these are just renewals from all of last year, the same budget line items, so.
Thank you. Anyone on the council have any questions regarding those commitments to those organizations? Anybody have any problems moving those forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we will move that forward to the next city council meeting. Number two, a resolution of the city of Moberly, Missouri appointing directors of the Moberly Crossings Community Improvement District.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Improvement District at Moberly Crossings, which is roughly the development by Pizza Hut and Rent 'n Go and the Health Department, some of the officers in those roles have elapsed, and it's important to note that the folks are appointed to this by the office that they hold, not necessarily the person. So we had Brian Crane as appointed as the city manager of Moberly, Greg Hodge as the finance director of Moberly, and Randy Asbury as the president of the Economic Development Corporation. So we are putting forth this to replace them with the current office holders for all of those positions. Matthew Douglas as our finance director, Kaylee serving as president of Moberly Area Economic Development, and myself as city manager.
Very good. Any questions regarding the appointments of the directors? Hearing none, are there any objections to moving that forward to the next city council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Number three, proposals from the Tourism Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two recommendations from the Tourism Advisory Commission to sponsor two events coming up, the Moberly Area Council on the Arts for the Phobia Film Festival, this is their second year doing this, $1,000 to support social media marketing, radio ads, and then a request from the Omar Bradley, Inc. group to support the 80th Anniversary D-Day Celebration, $1,000 for marketing, radio ad banners and flyers. These items will move forward for your consideration.
And these have all gone through the approval process from the Tourism Board of Directors?
Yes.
Very good. Any questions from any of the council members regarding any of the applications for tourism funding?
I have a question.
Mr. Kaiser.
With the inflation and everything else, have we considered at all raising the limit of $1,000 to 1,500 or, I mean, this gets paid out of the tourism fund, which is a tax that we receive, but I know advertising and so on has not gotten cheaper, it's gone quite up, up quite a bit. I don't know where the $1,000 number came from, but I'm just asking, is that something we need to look at in the future of increasing that?
I would probably have to defer that to Mr. Sanders, being he oversees that group.
The, that number was more or less set, you know, and we had some council participation in the past, and that was like, that was kind of the limit, the threshold that we got from them, I mean, I think the group would be open to that, a higher number if council was favorable with it.
How long ago was that?
Two or three years ago.
Okay, so it was still fairly recent, but, okay. It's just something, I just know, like I said, I know the costs have really gone up, so.
It's my understanding that fund just doesn't build very quickly, is that, am I correct on that, Tom? That fund just doesn't build very quick with the loss of, Matt, are you okay?
Yeah. I was just gonna add in that that fund is directly tied to the 4% lodging tax that comes from those, and as the room rates increase, then that has grown. So we do have a decent fund balance now, this year we're committing to the wayfinding signage that's gonna come out of that fund, but it has, there's a decent fund balance there.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there a portion of that that goes to capital and then a portion that goes to what the applications go to, correct?
I think it's split up about 8,000 and 7,000 this year, and that's the ratio. So about 8,000, I think, for one and 7,000 for capital, I believe that's, or vice versa.
And O-line share of the other expenditures are to the, to the Chamber of Commerce for our annual service agreement.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
So, Tom, I do realize no group is gonna turn away increasing a number of money. My question for Matt is, Matt, do you feel comfortable with the fund that it could be increased to, again, 1250, 1500, I don't know what the number should be, but do you feel confident that it could handle that?
What we've seen in the last, what I've seen in the last five years is rarely does all the money budget gets, and so, we are.
I thought that was the opposite, I thought we had to turn people down because we didn't have the funds in that, that's not true?
No.
That's not correct? Okay.
I think it's important to note also that this is a matching grant, so the organization matches whatever the city gives them.
And I apologize, I realize it's not tied to this particular option, but it's something I think we should consider at some point.
Very good, so this specific, these specific applications, are there any additional questions, either for the applicants or anyone else? Anybody have any objections to moving these forward? Hearing none, we'll move these forward for a vote at the next city council meeting. Number four, an application for a conditional use permit submitted by Devon Snodgrass with Outlying and Associates on behalf of Redeemer Church for temporary occupancy for church use located at 1145 South Morley Street.
Devon, I think is here as well, but I can kind of cover this, so the plan is for to continue the temporary occupancy, but they also, as you see, have plans there for the, the yellow is the existing building and the blue down there on south is where the additional, like would be the sanctuary and expansion, and they're also submitted a final site plan or preliminary site plan for the remainder of that that would show where possible future educational facilities would be built, like more L-shaped, I don't, that's not really depicting it, but it might be in your dotted packet there or not, but this time that blue sanctuary area is primary focus, and it was approved unanimously.
Through planning and zoning, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any questions on the application for the conditional use permit? Hearing none, everyone okay with moving that forward?
Yep.
We will move that forward to the next council meeting. Number five, an application submitted by Anthony Derboven on behalf of Bryson &amp; Bryson Holding LLC to replat Lot 5 of the Carl Haynes subdivision into Lot 5 and Lot 5A located at 914 Senec Avenue.
Normally we would just do a lot split on this, but since this parcel, which is the former trailer park out there on Senec, you know, Rosebud, I think is the name of it, and they had to split a parcel, a house that was on the front corner off previously, so due to that, the second split has to go through a replat, and that's what this process is, all they are splitting off the existing house on the northwest corner of the property off as a separate unit, and that was approved unanimously as well.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this request? Hearing none, any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? This will move forward to the next city council meeting. Number seven, Quanis Park Change Order. Mr. Bach, good to see you, man. Looking like it's been a while.
Yes, this has been, this is a change order relating to the putting in a tap both for for our line but also the neighbor to the east, so essentially the survey initially picked up a meter pit that we could tap into, that's actually for the neighbor to the east back when the parcel, we need to jump backward, but essentially the parcel was a larger parcel at one time where this, and two households, one to the east and one to the west, our driveway was carved out of it, and long story short, the one they picked up is for the neighbor to the east, so a tap will have to be done to the main, and this change order is to take care of that, the tap refilling it and some of the related materials.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bach regarding change order for Quanis Park? Any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? All right, we will move this forward to the next council meeting, that was actually number seven, I'd actually skipped over number six on accident, so we'll go back and revisit that one, which is a request to hold the 2024 Moberly Homecoming Parade on October 4th, 2024. Mike, what do you want to take that, chief, you want to take it, or?
We received the annual request from Moberly Senior High School to hold the homecoming parade, same route as last year, they submitted the plans, police department and looked through everything, so the information is attached there in your packet.
Very good. Any objection to or any questions regarding the Christmas, the parade? Hearing none, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting. Now moving back down to number eight. Resolution of the city of Moberly, Missouri approving an underground electric easement for Union Electric Company, DBA Amarin, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the easement instrument on behalf of the city.
So the short version is, and Randall can clean up on the legal side of it, but in working out the utilities, we want to try to in working out the utilities, we want to try to locate everything underground where possible, better visual entrance to the park, and so this easement provides for that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bach?
No.
Hearing none, any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that forward. And number nine, a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Ozark Fire Sprinkler Company, Inc. for the fire sprinkler protection system as part of the Omar M. Bradley Airport Terminal remodeling project.
This is one of the items you saw at the bid opening earlier, and it's not as critical on timing, so we're not trying to rush it through there, but there was multiple bids received, and they were the lowest and best bid on that, so we're recommending them to move forward.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Sanders? Hearing none, any objection to moving that forward to the next council meeting? We will move that one forward as well. Anything else that any of the council members would like to bring forward at this time? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Once again, thank you all for coming.